The time has arrived and I call the meeting of the City Council to order for today, February 25th. Please rise and salute our beautiful flag.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Monahan, welcome. I haven't seen you since Christ was in junior high. Counselors, just before, just before we begin our meeting here, just a quick info for you. I was told by the, by the mayor the other day that the city's website is in the process of being redone and rejuvenated and it's gonna look beautiful from what I was told. But there's also a problem with some missing bios for some members of our esteemed body here. And Counselor Monahan, you are, your beautiful mug has not been taken according to the mayor. So if you could, it would be, it would be nice so that we can, we can actually have a brand spanking new website for our body. Also, next week, I'm looking to see if possibly we're not going to have a Finance Committee meeting. One, we actually only have three items that will be referred to Finance. And two, this room will not be available to us next week. And which would mean that we would have to find another location to go to. But if we can kind of hold off and perhaps not have a Finance Committee meeting, we can, we can transfer whatever items we have to into the next Finance Committee meeting. We can have a week off and not have to necessarily be here unless you folks are objected to this. If not, Mr. Clerk, item number one.
The acceptance of the minutes of February 11th, 2019, City Council meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on fire.
We have the appointments in accordance with the revised.
Counselor, I need it.
If I might, Mr. President, I'd like to take items two, three, and four collectively and we suspend the rules and act on them this evening after the clerk has read them.
The motion has been made to take items two, three, and four collectively under the suspension of rule. First, we're gonna take a vote to take them collectively. All those in favor taking it collectively? So we shall. And now we're gonna make a, you're gonna make a motion that we suspend the rule and act upon them tonight.
After the clerk reads them, yes.
Second.
A motion has been properly made and properly second to take items two, three, and four under the suspension of rule and act on them tonight. On the motion, sir.
President, I don't have any objection per se, but usually it's the protocol to get a copy of the resume and I do not, Mr. Condon, of course, we know, I do not know the individual number three. I suspect he's ready, willing, and able to serve, but we don't have a resume.
There was a resume sent out.
I didn't get one. Okay.
Counselor, I know Manny Santayor fairly well. He actually is one of the managers for Laz Parking in Boston.
Okay.
He's a Brockton resident from Ward Four. And I actually asked the mayor to appoint him to that board only because he actually, very different from what we've seen in the past, he's actually somebody that has some background in that particular field.
Okay.
So I think it would be ideal for us and as a young man from this community who's very vested in this community, I think it would be a win-win situation for us.
Thank you for the information.
And that's why I.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
In accordance with the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton, Chapter Two, Section 2186, the mayor has reappointed Eileen Bartlett to position Assistant Solicitor full-time for a three-year term effective February 8th, 2019. Manual Saterio, 29 Kenneth Avenue, Brockton, to the Brockton Park and Authority for a five-year term. John Condon, 45 Woodland Drive, Bridgewater, to the Brockton Retirement Board for a term of three years.
All right, the question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointments are confirmed.
Does the President make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail?
A motion for reconsideration in hopes that it does not prevail has been properly made and properly second. All those in favor of reconciliation? Reconsideration.
He needs a reconciliation, right?
All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
We have a report of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of February 13th, 2019.
Accepted and placed on fire.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of February 19th, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on fire.
We have a communication from the mayor submitting a letter from John Marion of the Brockton Park and Authority Board submitting his resignation from the Brockton Park and Authority Board.
That will be accepted and placed on fire.
We have an audit amendment in Chapter 27 of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton concerning the regulations and taxation of marijuana. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton. Article Three, General Regulations and Permitted Modifications, is hereby amended by adding the following section, 27 dash four, paragraph four, adult use of marijuana. End Council, February 11th, 2019, passed to a third reading as amended. Note, well, it was a recommendation from the Planning Board as follows. Operational requirements, restrictions, and conditions. B would be odor control and ventilation. The exhaust system to control odor shall be designed by a licensed professional air quality environmental engineer recognized by the Commonwealth. End Council, March 26th, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Audit and Planning. Those reports were favorable as amended in the Audit and favorable in Planning. End Council, December 27th, 2018, motion to refer to Planning was properly seconded. Motion carried by a hand vote. End Council, January 28th, 2019, hearing held. End City Council, February 11th, 2019, Planning Board report was favorable with recommendations and passed to a third reading as amended by a hand vote.
Counselor Beauregard?
Yes, at this time, I would like to ask to review the buffer zone and subsection 6F and parenthesis two on the feet, the distance. And I was hoping that we could look at 750, the issue of the 750 again. Because I realized that in ordinance, it was three for 500 and two for 750. So at that time, I just.
Well, Counselor, are you making that any form of?
Yes, an amendment, amended.
Is that in a form of a motion, though?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'll second it for purposes of voting and I also would like to, on the motion, like to address it as Chairman of the Audit.
All right, the motion has been properly made and properly seconded. On the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselors, the five of us that served last year on the Audit Committee, again, we vetted this out for months. Ultimately, a motion was made for 750 feet relative to the buffer. At that time, prior to the vote, City Solicitor Phil Nazarela, in his opinion, he opined that we are not allowed, we as municipal, are not allowed to extend beyond the 500 as set by the state. There was quite a lot of debate relative to that. And ultimately, there was a motion made and it failed three, it actually prevailed three to two to stay at 500. Myself and Counselor Farwell had opted for the 750, but it failed. With that being said, however this vote prevails, I'm gonna make a motion to accept and incorporate into the final version the Planning Board recommendation. Because as you recall, the Planning Board met prior, I mean, after, post-Ordinance Committee meeting. They did come up with a very valuable, I think, nuance that should be incorporated into that. So we'll address Counsel Beauregard and then if we can make that motion.
Well, the motion is, was properly made and properly seconded. All, on the motion, sir?
On the motion, I just wanted to speak for a minute. We did spend quite a bit of time on this and I think our own, our own counsel was a little, possibly not in agreement with Mr. Nazarela, but I think there's no question the way I have read the state regulation that we cannot expand that 500 feet. And I would ask that, that we, that we don't pass the, to the 750. I understand the reasoning behind it and I think it's valid. And the problem with if we go to the 750 at this point, I believe it will kill the downtown territory. There is physically, the two licenses that would be in the downtown area, we would probably have to go back to the drawing board and start over, which would be, at this point, a real issue. Again, I understand the, the feeling behind the 750, but I don't feel it really will make that much of a difference. And I think there is no question in reading the state mandate, the state law, that we are not allowed to expand beyond the 500 feet and could only reduce that distance in, in our ordinance. So I'll ask people to vote for it the way it came out of ordinance in that case. Thank you.
Counsel.
First of all, I know how the vote's going to go and that's fine. A lot of, a lot of time and effort was put into the whole issue of marijuana, marijuana licensing and business regulations. I will say, however, that at the Audit Committee level, it was brought up that the town of Dayton established a buffer zone far in excess of 500 feet. The town has to submit their zoning bylaws to the Attorney General's Office for approval and those bylaws were approved. And those of us who argued for an increased buffer particularly noted that if it were illegal, if somehow something wasn't being done properly and didn't comport with the law, the Attorney General's Office certainly would have flagged it. So I don't think Counselor Beauregard is out of line by suggesting this. I understand how, I always say, I respect how everyone votes. Some of us do feel passionately about this, but it is time to move on.
It's time to move on. Anybody else? Anyone else? All right, so we're gonna take a vote on the, on the amendment. All those in favor of supporting the amendment read by Counselor Beauregard? Are we gonna do the third roll call or just a hand vote?
We can do it by hand.
Just a hand vote. All those in favor?
Just on the motion. Through you, Mr. President. Are you, are you talking across the board to set, from the 500 to 750? Is that your motion?
Well, that's, yes.
Okay.
That's how it was set, yes.
Okay.
This was throughout the, throughout the city?
Oh, I wasn't worried about the existing. It was, it was for the schools.
So just an F2?
Yeah, that's what it said. Yeah, that's what I had said before. 6F2. Okay, that's what we're looking at. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
The votes on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? The nays have it. All right, so now, we are going to Counselor Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the recommendations of the Planning Board and incorporate that. And I'm gonna have to ask our legislative counsel, I'm not, I'm not privy to the actual subsection, but if we could incorporate.
6B3.
6B3. And I'd like to incorporate it as stated and recommended by the Planning Board with the verbiage offered. That's the form of a motion.
It would say that the exhaust system to control odor shall be designated by a licensed professional air quality environmental design engineer recognized by the Commonwealth. And it previously just said professional licensed engineer. This specifies professional air quality environmental engineer.
Second. And motion has been properly made and properly seconded. So we're gonna make, this is to accept the amendment?
Yes.
All those in favor are accepting the amendment? All those opposed, the amendment carries. So now we're gonna go to the question on ordination.
As amended.
As amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's eleven in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained as amended.
Make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
A motion for reconsideration in hopes that it does not prevail has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? It fails.
The petition of Daniel Gill Jr.
Thank God.
Of 551 Summer Street, East Bridgewater, for a garage license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, Brockton, in City Clerk's Office, October 12th, 2018, hearing assigned for December 27th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. End Council, December 27th, 2018, postponed until January 14th, 2019, City Council meeting. End City Council, January 14th, 2019, hearing held, referred to Public Safety. That report was favorable.
Counselor De Castro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I met with people on this matter this morning and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue it.
Second.
Postpone it to the, to the next City Council meeting in two weeks. It's not ready.
The, the motion is, Counsel, is that, do you have anything you want to say?
Motion's made. Motion's made to postpone.
Off the motion, can I just ask, why?
This was before public safety, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and, and I think the head of public safety, Counselor Eary, will attest, it wasn't quite ready. There were some loose ends and at that time, Counselor Eary told the applicants that if it's not, if all these things aren't cured, then we're going to postpone it. We won't hear it. And that is the case. I, I met with someone from the Fire Department and the Police Department along with the applicants this morning. It's not quite ready. Thank you.
All right, the motion has been made to postpone. All those in favor postponing? All those opposed? We will postpone it until our next City Council meeting.
Yes.
On the 11th.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Okay, the question, question's gonna be on the next petition. Since there is no garage license at that address, you cannot move on with a repair license.
So we will need a motion to postpone that as well?
And I'll make a motion to postpone that for the very same reason.
Second.
And I probably should have been on my game and, and made a motion to take them collectively. I apologize. Thank you.
It's okay. You know, we're friends with this. We can learn as we go along. A motion has been made to postpone. All those in favor postponing? All those opposed? Postpone to March 11th.
Number 11, petition to George Brewster of 25 Main Street, Weymouth, Mass. DBA Brewster Ambulance Service for Transfer of Garage License Located at 1531 Main Street, in City Clerk's Office, October 22nd, 2018, hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019. End Council, January 14th, 2019, hearing held, referred to Public Safety. That report was favorable.
The question is on granting by a hand vote. All those in favor granting? All those opposed? The petition is granted.
Petition of George Brewster of 25 Main Street, Weymouth, Mass. DBA Brewster Ambulance Service for Transfer of Garage License Located at 225 North Montell Street, Brockton, in Clerk's Office, October 22nd, 2018, hearing assigned for January 14th, 2019. End Council, January 14th, 2019, hearing held, referred to Public Safety. That report was favorable.
The question is on granting by a hand vote. All those in favor of granting? All those opposed? The petition is granted.
The appointment of Jeffrey Chanel, Chadel of 685 Oak Street, Unit 12, Brockton, for an alternate to a member of the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term. End Council, February 11th, 2019, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Counsel, I need it.
If I might, on item number 15, I don't think that we really need to have the clerk read the whole thing and it's entirely.
He loves reading that stuff.
And thought maybe we could waive it. We're either voting for it or we're not voting for it is the way I look at it. I mean, why make him read it for the fourth time? We've heard enough about it.
The motion to waive the reading, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Okay, just at number 15, order that the sum of $7,800,000 is appropriate to pay costs to make improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facilities.
The question is on passage to a third reading by a hand vote. All those in favor of a third reading? All those opposed? For a third reading, it goes. Number 16.
Total appropriation in amount of $215,000, $200,000 from DPW purchase of services, $15,000 from the DPW goods and supplies to DPW overtime. End Council, February 11th, 2019, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolved to invite Rob May, Director of Planning, to inform the City Council as to what is transpiring with the Gandy Building. Since we were told over a year ago that we would be seeing a demolition and new structure in place, businesses located in the same city block have expressed serious concerns. End Council, February 11th, 2019, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Vote, Mr. President.
Would it be appropriate to take 17 through 20 collectively? They're all favorable and they're all resolved?
No.
Second.
No.
A motion has been made in second. On the motion, yeah?
No, I just think they, they shouldn't be taken collectively because they vary with different issues. And I just, I mean.
Well, the motion has been made in second.
Questions on the motion.
This is on, on the motion. All those in favor are taking them collectively. All those opposed? We're gonna take them collectively.
Resolved to invite Rob May, Director of Planning, to inform the City Council as to what is transpiring with the historic commission since the Audit Committee of 2018 had voted to create such an entity to protect our historic location throughout the city. I wish to bring this before the Council since the private advocate for our city's history, Kyle Landahol, is no longer with us and I believe we should continue his work. Resolved to invite Dan Evans, current Chair of the Brockton 21st Century Corporation, to inform the City Council as to what is transpiring with this organization since the departure of the Executive Director late in 2018. Resolved to invite the new Chief Financial Officer to come before Committee of this Council to enlighten us of any changes that be made in the operation of the CFO's office. Order that the City Solic-, oops, stop right there.
Just that one.
End City Council, I got carried away with that, you know? End Council, February 11th, 2019, these were read to the Committee on Finance. The reports were favorable.
Now, the question is on adoption of items 17, 18, 19, and 20 by a roll call. Vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order, items 17, 18, 19, and 20 are adopted.
Order, oops, okay. Order, the City Solicitor or his designee shall appear before a Committee of the City Council to provide all relevant information on the city's criteria and process for review and approval of host community agreements. Two, copies of all host community agreements approved by the mayor prior to the date of this office be provided to the City Clerk for distribution to the City Council. Three, for host community agreements approved by the mayor or any other proper person or entity, after the date of this order, a copy of this agreement or agreements shall be forwarded to the City Clerk within seven days of approval. All agreements shall be made available for inspection in the office of the City Clerk by any person with proper notice at least 24 hours in advance of such inspection. End Council, February 11th, 2019, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Mr. President.
Counsel, follow.
Just on this issue, by chance, have you or the clerk received copies of the host community agreements? I know the news media has and they called today and I said, I haven't seen any of them.
Yeah, we did.
Me neither.
You did?
We did.
Oh, okay, fine. Thank you.
Was it, was it mail? Just to you?
They came to the Clerk's office.
But wasn't the question for us, all of us, to get it?
If you.
Yeah, we're supposed to all get it.
Well, if you want it, we'll, we'll email it to you tomorrow.
Please.
It came to you electronically?
There are 11 of them, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay?
Thank you.
It's 121 pages, so.
It's 121 pages?
Yeah.
How many?
Well, you've got 11, 10 pages. Piece is about 121 pages. So I'll email that to you, whatever your desire is.
No, email's fine.
Fine.
There's 11?
Mm-hmm.
There's 11 now. They're cloning.
I'll just put it in the pile I got at home and I'll get to it at some point.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna get copies of it.
That's fine.
All right, so the question on item 21 is on adoption by a roll call. Vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darin Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
And the order is adopted. Vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.